Good morning y'all. If I'm whispering, I'm sorry. It is March 28th. It is 6:22 in the morning. I'm so tired. It don't make any sense. I'm gonna get ready for school, moth break, so we're back at it. How's it new here? My name's Makaya. I am a nursing student who is struggling to wake up. But I'm about to go brush my teeth and all that stuff, so. Dirty chocolate train. I'll get him a camera. Y'all, I be watching like, uh, y'all know goddamn Zo or Zo. I be watching his lives. I like to watch his live in the morning, I don't know. Kinda wakes me up a little if it's like funny. I don't know, I like to watch stuff that's funny in the morning just to like up my spirits. But anyway, so y'all, I'm about to ice my face because I'm trying to wake myself up. So I usually do this at night, but I'mma do it in the morning. Hopefully that helps with my energy because I'm trying to work on getting more energy in the morning. Um, I just be having that night shift mentality since I work nights. And so it's hard for me to go to bed early and wake up early, so. Let me show you. Always rinse off your ice before you put on your face. So then I'mma set a timer for like, I'mma set a timer for like one minute and my face for a minute. So, ready, set, go. Oh, that feels so good. Oh, that woke me up a little. Then I just pat dry. I don't know where my mirror is, so I gotta look at it. Oh, it's over there. I took down my mini brace yesterday. My hair was so cute yesterday. Love a good wake up and go. Gonna put on like these gold earrings. Think I'mma just make me some cereal. Call of the day. I didn't wake up early enough as usual. Sorry, I just be one of all the Z's I can get. Alright you guys, so your girl's done getting ready. It's about to be the start of a new class. Today is massage. Uh, my class is massage today, tomorrow will be farm. So hopefully it goes good, but yeah. I'm just, um, I'm always just dreading waking up, like that's like, uh, annoying. I don't know, just waking up early, having to get up early is annoying. Still had nighttime nursing school. But, um, yeah, I'm about to eat some cereal, then we're about to get ready to hit the road. Like I said, y'all, my school's like an hour and a half away. So, so yeah, let's eat some breakfast and head out the door. Alright y'all, ooh, shoot. The girl's tired, I'm really not in the mood today. I kinda like was starting to feel moody when I got, when I was in school. Cause I'm about to start my period. Shit's annoying. Um, I'm watching Aaliyah, Aaliyah Space. Definitely one of my favorite YouTubers. Uh, here, let me show y'all my little monitor TV. I don't know where she's at. There she go. She's not really showing her face, but yeah. Uh, she definitely one of my favorite YouTubers. Vlogs, B A one. Who else I like? Kyra, I watched Kyra, I watched Arnel. Ooh, who else I watch? I've been trying to start, those are like my three main big YouTubers I watch. I watched Alexis, Rebecca, I watched a couple of her videos. But new YouTubers I've been trying to tap into, well, I have been watching. The other girl, uh, her name's Genesis, um, she actually lives in my city. So I feel like she do really good little videos too. Um, who else I watch? She's like mainly the only new one, but then I just watch like new people here and there, like or whatever. But I know she's like one of the new ones and I have to support her cause she, she's an Indian native, period. So, ah, school was long, like, oh my God, today was the first class of massage. It felt so long, I'm like, yo, like, oh, whatever. And then I'm cramping, so I'm feeling odd, I'm like, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to go home. But yeah, but other than that, it was a good first day. Um, I took a quiz. We took a quiz, I got a nine out of 10 on it. Um, so got a 90% in the class, so, but now I really have homework to do. But I was literally working on my puzzle. Here, let me show you guys my puzzle. I have started this puzzle, it's gonna be on, I showed you all my, my solo vlog, make sure you guys go check out that video. But, um, it's a black on puzzle and this is gonna how, this is how it's gonna turn out. So the pic, this is supposed to be the picture and then after I get done with the pa, the, uh, after I get done with the puzzle, I'm going to frame it and yeah, and then put it in my apartment stash. Oh yeah, so these are my lights and stuff. Uh, my room feels cram, like I'm trying to be, my room just feels so cram. But here, let me show you. But over here is like my apartment stash. I've been like buying stuff for like my future apartment, whenever I get it. Um, I've just been buying like little things here and there. So like, I've just got, um, this is for my switch, that's gonna be mounted on my wall. I got a blender. What else I got? I got pillows, 13 size, but so everything in here, we can really just do a haul. A lot of things to like open up for y'all, so we'll just do a little haul. So like I said, I got this magic blender. Um, I got it on sale, a lot of this stuff I kinda got on Black Friday. Um, I got this glass set, like cups and stuff. Um, just have glass cups and also I can make like drinks with it, cause I know once, I'mma be making drinks like hella. Cause I already know like, when you know that you're gonna have a lot of company over, I just already know that. So, and I, I don't mind having company over, um, but when I want my meantime, I will have it. But I know like weekends, I'm probably gonna mainly have company. This is stuff I've just been saving over time, like, oh, but I found this actually at my house. So it's a soap dispenser, uh, whatever. Oh, let me show you what I got this stuff from. I got this online at Best Buy and I got this at Ross. This set was $13, like, I was like, oh yeah, run it. I got hand sanitizers, this is from, I, I, I stole these from work. So I got like hand sanitizers. I haven't looked at this stuff in so long, cause I don't know, I feel like I've just been getting setback from this apartment. Um, and it's like annoying, cause I'm so ready to get it, but like, it's really, I feel like I would've moved in somewhere by now if I didn't get accepted to nursing school, since I did have to cut back on hours. So that's annoying, so you know, I'm definitely just trying to figure out ways to like increase my income. But, um, like I make good money now, but I need to be able to make good money while in school, working less, you know, like if I was still working my 40 an hour, then it would've been something different. I just turned on some more lighting. Okay, so I got these air fresheners, so I got this scent because, um, if y'all watch like, uh, Zo, Zoe, he was like, these cranberry scents was the best. I was like, let me try it, and I like cranberry scent, so I knew I'm gonna like it. This is for like the shower, so hair won't get clogged on it. I just took an extra one, cause my dad had ordered this and I just took it. I have silverware. Silverware, I got this from Walmart. This glass set, I found like at my house, like no one used this, so I'm like, put it in the stash. And I have this seasoning carousel, um, it's like spins around, so it don't come with the seasonings or nothing. So I got this off Amazon, I can link this on my, um, storefront, uh, in the description box. But, um, yeah, I just don't really, I know I'mma still have a seasoning cabinet, but I really don't want a seasoning cabinet. Like, I, I'mma have like my bix, I'm trying to fit everything like in there. And then like the extra seasoning I got, I can put it like in a pantry, cause I really don't want that seasoning cabinet. I feel like it gets so messy and I feel like this would be like way more organized. Next, I have a big boy air fryer, okay? This is brand new, I just opened it just to look at it, the size, like when I opened it. But I got this on Black Friday from Best Buy, I gotta ship to my house. Yeah, this is the big boy. I need a big boy, I need a big boy. And I also have my pots and pan, my pots and pans set. They're down there, but like how they was sent, cause I don't, it was sent, like it don't have a picture on it, so I'm not about to grab and show y'all, like and open it, like no. I'm trying to keep everything just closed, I did open this, don't lie. This is a real nice big air fryer has, uh, when you open the drawers, it's, you can put like two different meals. And I'mma need that, because I'mma need some air fried food, period. Yeah, so I've been, yeah, I've been having that, that's been, I just started working on that since, since the fall. Oh, I have to open this package from Amazon. My jewelry box came, uh, not my jewelry box, my jewelry stand came. I can't wait to set it up. Okay, so this first outfit I got is like a Skims dupe. A little set, two piece set. I really just hope if, yeah, I think it might fit. Cause usually, I'm bigger up top, so some stuff like I be having to get a larger tops. So I just got this like two piece set in this beige color. Then I got it in this, uh, the pants too. Just like some cute Skims loungewear. Cause I wanna start having more loungewear, more comfy stuff to wear, because either like go to school then, like I can throw this on like a little denim jacket, like I won't make it too, I won't make it like super loungy wear, but I could just wear it around the house, like, I don't know. I wanna start looking more presentable, definitely, and all that stuff, like when I'm filming too. So that was that, I'm also doing like a TikTok on that outfit anyways. And then this next fit, and this next thing I'm so excited about. I'm so ready to have a jewelry stand, like y'all don't understand. Oh my gosh, my battery's about to die. And my thing's overheating, for what? Start filming on my phone. Aw man, I gotta build it. I'll link everything down below. So if y'all wanna order it, y'all can. Why does it like look scratched up? I'm gonna wipe it off. Like it looks scratched up. Why do I gotta build it myself? Oh, that's like the gag though. Let's build this little jewelry stand, cause yeah, I can't wait to set it up. Yeah, it turned out real cute, real cute. Uh, I do wanna show y'all once I get more. I don't know where all my jewelry went, like, and that's exactly who I ordered that. It look like uncentered. Okay, the reason I even got that, because every time I buy jewelry, I lose it, because I don't know where to put it, like I always just throw it on my counter, then it's gone, like, so I'm happy that I got that, like, that was like a must have. And it turned out really cute, I can't wait to like really deck it out, so I can really have my jewelry organized and stuff, so. That was like well needed, but yeah, it turned out real cute, like I could finally feel like I can order stuff and put it away. Yeah, I'mma see if I can find my jewelry, like I'm not about to look for it now, cause I'm about to do some homework, but definitely I'm gonna try to hunt for some jewelry, see if there's some of my pieces lying around, cause. But yeah, y'all, I'm hungry, I think I'm gonna make some noodles. I don't feel like cooking anything, I just wanna just eat some quick and call it a day. Um, so yeah, but I think I'm gonna, I'mma go downstairs to do homework, film more productive. Yeah, turn on some Family Guy, something like for background noise and just vibe. Ooh, I'mma drink some wine too, I do some homework. I like drinking, like a little wine when I do homework. It don't make me unfocused or nothing, so don't get it twisted, but I think it just kinda like just relax me and just like, okay, let's get this done. Let's do this shit. Plus I want some wine too, like, hopefully that is kinda like, make the mood a little better, cause I'm really not in the best mood. What did we learn today? We learned a lot today, I'm not even gonna hold you, like, we learned so much today. Like I kinda had to like review it into like really grasp what I learned today, it was so much. Yeah, I have a farm, I have a farm quiz tomorrow, so, but we have to do this assignment on ATI um, before we go to class tomorrow, so I'm, that, that's like, I'm gonna knock that out first. That's really the only assignment I really have to do, the other than that, I just gotta study. Well, I have another assignment, that's like due later in the week, but I wanna at least get that ATI done and then start working on my outlines for the, um, for the test next week. So I can have all that prepared and I can just study. So let me, I wanna show you guys like my planning schedule that I wanna do to prioritize YouTube in school, cause that's like been the biggest struggle. Where my phone? See my sock? Okay, so this is the plan. So I'm starting to try to get organized and do like to do list. Yeah, so today is to, to complete the farm ATI, like working on the massage. Oh, I do need to film two TikToks today, but I can do those real quick, I just gotta knock them out, um. I do have to do two TikToks, but that one's not happening. One is completing the puzzle and like kinda like doing like the puzzle TikTok. And then the other one is like the haul, and I can do that today. I wanna start having assignments done before Thursday. So I wanted to spend Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday finishing my outlines, finishing my assignments for the week. Like I wanna get all that done before Wednesday. And then Tuesday, I mean not Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I want that to be, of course, I'm still gonna study here and there, but at least all my outlines and all that stuff is done, so I can just go through my flashcards, like back to back, and I ain't gotta write nothing down for real. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, those are gonna be me either filming a video that night or TikTok, like mainly content, I'm editing, content, editing, or, I'm either editing or content. Cause Sunday, I really don't wanna edit, I don't like to do a rush edit, cause I, I feel like I've been doing that lately and um, just trying to like get videos out there, since I haven't been that consistent on YouTube. I haven't done terrible, I've done worse than what I've been doing, but I feel like, I've just been doing a lot of studying on YouTube. I feel like the, it's like, I have to do so much work than what I'm putting into, like, I'm then, I'm just trying to invest, really trying to make this channel count this year, like I told y'all, the year, this, the goal this year is 10K, like no if and about it, I might quit YouTube if I don't hit 10K. I just plan, I'm not gonna quit YouTube, cause I do enjoy YouTube, like, let's get, not get it twisted. Bro, when I first started YouTube, I felt like I was growing at a good rate, like I got to a thousand subscribers in like, in a couple of months. And then, and it started just picking up from there, then, then eventually started just slowing down, so I feel like I'm just at my like steady rate with YouTube. Like just flat line, just right there. I might have a beep beep, but flat line. I feel like my stuff was going up and then it just shot down, like, cause I just wasn't consistent. I feel like I would've got so far with my channel if I was just consistent. Trust me, I'm blessed, like, don't get me wrong, but I feel like the things I definitely wanna accomplish is not presented to me, because I feel like I have not mastered being disciplined. I have not mastered being consistent with nothing, nothing. I haven't mastered being consistent with anything. And I feel like that is my biggest downfall. And I need to be consistent, like what the heck, like, that's the thing, like why, why can I not be consistent with anything, like? It's just like I start like the gym, prime example. I, I get to working, then it's like, I don't wanna do it no more, like I'm good. Like I'm good, whatever. My, even my prayer book, like I got a whole devotion book, like I've been doing better with it, trying to do that, but having been consistent reading that, like, it's just like nothing is consistent, like, that's like what's pissing me off. So I just have not been consistent, motivation just not been there. Yeah, but also nursing school been making me tired, like I ain't gonna lie. That first beginning, I'm gonna do a whole separate video talking about even that, my fundamentals in lab, like of course, I'm gonna do a video on that separately. But even that was like, I've never felt so drained consistently ever. Like I felt so drained, like, uh. Uh, yeah, so I think that's my problem, it's just like, I need to figure out how to get some good energy to be consistent. And it's just like, it's like a lot, y'all, and I feel like my head, my brain, I work best at night. And it's like, I can't be up all night, cause I got school, cause I'm telling y'all when, when I, cause I still got that night shift mindset, like I, my mind, my brain's working at night. Even when I just force myself to go to sleep early, I'm still thinking of ideas in my head while I'm laying down, which is keeping me up still. So it's just like, I can never get a break, like it's like, I'm just trying to prioritize my time. Like literally, like this is like a little rant, I'm sorry, like, but this is like real shit, like for real, like, I'm just trying to prioritize everything. Uh, it's the clapping, like, stop, anyway. Alright y'all, let's get to some homework. When are we gonna do our, say hi? Aw, she's a little cute, you ain't even see her. Good morning y'all, it's the next day. It's like, I'm tired, but I'm just like, oh my God, I was having a good sleep. Like, oh my God, like, the sleep was immaculate, like, you know, you even like, I don't even know, like, I was laying there, like, damn, I was sleeping good, and I turned around, and that position was comfy, like you know, you were sleeping good when any position was comfortable, like, I'm like, jeez. Yeah, I'm just icing my face, waking me up. A little skincare, I did my skincare, I did my skincare, I was like, oh shoot, let me, um, ice my face. I feel like this like semis wakes me up, so. Freak. And y'all, I'm about to, I was about, I'm cooking though, but I was about to like walk out of here with this bonnet on, like, yeah, I'm a bonnet girly, I'm sorry. I will run errands in a bonnet, I don't care. Family said stop doing that in this ghetto, but hey, you gonna do what you gotta do. Especially if my hair ain't done. I'm gonna do it. But like, I'll put a hood on, like, I, like, keep the bottom on, put a hood on, like, I don't see the problem with that, but anyway. Uh, I'm making me a croissant sandwich, this about to smack, but I kinda gotta hurry up though, cause I wanna be on time. Think that's been a minute. Uh, I'm downstairs, so I'm just patting my face with a paper towel. Can y'all comment down below any face moisturizers, skin moisturizer, like anywhere, like for dry skin? Cause in the winter, in the cold, I get real bad dry skin, that kinda woke me up a little bit, I ain't gonna cap. Take my hair down. I was about to leave again, I'm like, oh shoot, let me take my hair down. Oh, godly. Good enough.
Are we gonna cheers?
Okay, yeah, let's cheers.
Cheers to pharmacology. Whoever stops first, does something embarrassing.
Okay.
Wait, we're gonna try three, come on guys. Mine's empty.
Oh, that hurts.
Wait, so I don't have that closet here, is it?
You stopped first though, that's what you said.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
No, but she stopped first, I was like, I know when she finished.
My nose is sick. And she was done.
Oh my, I don't. I know it's.
I feel in my back.
He saw me like this.
Oh my God, I feel that. I was just about to reach back there. Yeah.
Is this water? Yeah.
Oof.
Are you trying to rinse me out? Yeah, I'm just trying to give you a little rinse, so that way you have more. Do you want to do this? Yeah. You know Pam, when she drinks that Chili's and she goes, it's like second drink?
My cousin told, told me to wash that, she says funny.
It's so good. Crystal, listen, we are gonna be late for, oh my God, I'm having a conversation. We have two minutes. Let me go. Are you a bill? I did.
Oh, the lighting down here is trash, but, huh, let's talk about my day. Think the last time y'all seen me was me and my, uh, me and the other nursing students, uh, my friends from their school. They, um, we had went to the Mex- Mexican spot, uh, in the area. Y'all know I'm not from, from that area, from the school, so, you know, they could be having to show me around. We went out to this Mexican spot and we had like margaritas, we had two, uh, me and this girl had two shots, like. We went out to this Mexican spot and we had like margaritas. We had two, uh, me and this girl had two shots, like. And it's like, y'all, it's lunch break, like we had to go back to class. Uh, bad influence. But no, I was down though. I was like, yeah, let's, let's get it. But the thing is, we had a quiz, so that was like a very irresponsible move. So, I won't be doing that again, cuz I didn't really do that. Uh, but the assignment I did earlier, I did do good on, so. Uh, whatever, but I'm really not gonna solely blame it on uh, Lika because. Um, cuz my instructor, she basically taught the material. God, this is farm, so she taught the material and then we took a quiz afterwards, like. Listen y'all, I do not retain information like that, like you can't just quiz me on something I just learned, like I literally gotta analyze, like. I can't do that, so I don't know. It wasn't a terrible, it wasn't like a bad quiz or nothing. It was just like, that's not how I learn, like at all. Like y'all, I'm telling y'all, I'm just a really hands-on learner, like I gotta be in the scene and like you gotta kinda like show me. Why is that way or whatever, like you just gotta show me the material, like. Hands-on, like, like, I don't know how to explain it, like I'm a visual, hands-on learner. But lecture, oh my gosh, I, how do y'all be, uh. Sitting in lecture is so draining, like I just feel like, why is people talking this much? Like, why? I just bought some groceries, let's see. I got some groceries, I'm about to put up, put them some groceries up and, yeah. Um, this gonna be, uh, about to be the end of this vlog though, because this upcoming week. This upcoming week, I really ain't got much to do. I got work and I'm not filming because I ain't really got much to do, so. This is definitely gonna be the end of this vlog. I'm definitely might pick up the camera like later this week. Definitely pick up the camera like later this week, but I do wanna uh, try on. I do wanna try on this um, Amazon um, find I found. It's like a Skims dupe. I wanna try on for you guys. Um, I showed y'all like yesterday and um, yeah, I showed y'all yesterday, so. I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna try it on today, cuz I'm gonna film a TikTok. So maybe I'll end off this video showing y'all behind the scene on me. Yeah, I think I'm gonna end the video off with a little tutorial on how I film my videos. So y'all, this is the outfit. I just filmed my TikTok, so. This is the fit. I'll link it down below. It's like a Skims dupe. Hopefully y'all can see it. Details, kinda get that. Men's brief look and in the top. This is really good quality. The leggings fit really good. I was nervous about them. They fit real nice. They're like a good stretch. Yeah, but yeah, make sure y'all go check out my Amazon storefronts. I got like my nursing equipment. I will be adding this set. And yeah, order, order. So, but that is it for. But yeah, y'all, thank y'all so much for watching the vlog. New vlogs will be coming soon. Um, I'm gonna start picking up the camera more. And all that, so, but yeah, but yeah, I catch y'all on the next video.